Okay, it's seven o'clock. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the December 12, 2023 Planning Board meeting. I'd like to rise and start with the pledge, please. This is the only Planning Board meeting for the month of December and the last one of the year, so I hope everyone has good holidays coming up. A few announcements before we get started. Emergency exits are on your left and right. The restrooms are out the back door to the left. If you haven't already, please sign in on the attendance sheet, which is on the back table. There are business cards also back there with contact information for the Planning Department. Also on the table is a copy of the resolutions that will be read tonight along with the agenda. Please silence your cell phones or turn them off so they don't distract those who are presenting to the board. And also, please, if you have any conversations during the meeting, please take them outside and close the doors behind you so that, because that might be a little difficult, but go way around the corner. So it doesn't disrupt the proceedings. So, we don't have any meeting minutes this evening for approval. Lisa said she's for sure going to have them first week in January. Correspondence, I don't think we have any correspondence in front of us. And for our Board and Committee updates, Drew, you're here. Do you have anything you'd like to report on from the Town Board's perspective?
Good evening, and forgive my absence last month. I was dealing with pneumonia and starting to feel better finally, so. From the Town Board, Alexis Ogra was elected in November, so she's our Councilwoman-elect for the Town Board starting in January, and she's currently serving on the ZBA. As well, from a personnel side, congratulations to Keith, to his appointment as the project manager provisionally. And tomorrow evening, just a reminder that we have our menorah lighting here at Town Hall out front at 6:00 PM for anyone that would like to attend that. The 7,200 Rossin Road project, I anticipate to see a resolution for that this coming Monday. I believe it's still outstanding, the number of units that will be confirmed as part of that resolution, but I know that hopefully we'll bring some finalization to that. And probably the two best things that have happened at the town this week is two grants that have been awarded to us. So the first, in the tune of $530,000, which will fund the engineering for the mountain park dams, so that was certainly a great grant. And then today, we received notice that we were approved for $702,000 for the Water Infrastructure Improvement Grant that will be used to work on some of our, you know, pump station improvements, replacements here within the town. So certainly two great things.
Outstanding, that sounds great. Thank you, Drew. Any questions for Drew?
Just a comment. I've had feedback from probably close to a dozen people about the menorah out front, all positive, so I thought I'd pass that along.
I'm glad to hear that, thank you. And then I failed to mention, I'd like to thank both Keith, Rich O'Donnell, our Finance Director, Jason Epps and Barb Johnston, I believe, from La Bella for their work related to those grants, so I certainly appreciate it, thank you.
Great, thank you, Drew. Kim is not here this evening. Lisa? Or Keith? All right, Keith, jump right in.
You unfortunately get me. Keith made it from the town of Victor, so for your next agenda, which is for the January 9, 2024 meeting, you'll have the Collier Park final application and then also any carryovers from tonight. Thank you.
Thanks, Keith. Okay, so with that, we have three items on the agenda this evening. The first one is closed public hearing, so it's Mobile Graphics, 7120 Lane Road. They've been before several times, and I think we've got some good updates, so if you'd like to share us on, share with everyone on your changes?
Yeah, so good evening, my name is Mason Everhart, Engineer with the DDS Companies. Also in attendance with me tonight are Chris and Rhonda Bailey, owners of Mobile Graphics. So, as you recall and as you just previously stated, we've been before you a couple times now, the most recent meeting being October 24. And over the course of those last couple meetings, the main concern voiced by the Board has been with regards to the location of the proposed building, and more specifically, the distance between the proposed building and the single-family home to the west. Good news, we have since took the advice of the Board. We've decided to connect the proposed building to the existing building now, which maximizes the separation distance between any new construction on a site and that single-family home to the west. More specifically, it's 154 feet building to building now and 117 feet from the property line. So, we have received comments from the code enforcement officer, from the landscape architect, from the fire marshal, and then we received La Bella's comments earlier today. We've addressed the code enforcement officer, the landscape architect, and fire marshal comments, and then we're confident that the comments that La Bella has can be, can be addressed and worked through with them. So, so yeah, of course, we're here asking for, for feedback from you guys, and then additionally, we do request that you consider conditional approval tonight with the condition being outstanding comments from, from La Bella. Thank you.
Thank you. Personally, I'd like to thank you all for working with us and hearing, listening to us really and addressing the comments, but if you want to briefly state, is there anything else that you wanted to say about the site plan other than what you just did?
Yeah, so obviously, as you can see up on the, on the screen there.
Probably have a pointer in front of you if you'd like to use it.
So, this was, this is the same building footprint in the previous submission, and then we now have a adjoining, a connection building, if you will, that just, you know, for roof lines, it makes it easier to connect the two buildings together. And additionally, some landscaping changes per the landscape architect. I've gotten two waves of comments back from him now, so I'm pretty confident that, that he's satisfied, but of course, if not, we can continue to work with him. We're encroaching into the, the existing stormwater management area, I suppose you could call it slightly, and, and then drainage is just going to be along the back end of the property there, so.
Okay.
The previous area has, has remained about the same as, as the last submission.
That was a question I had, and as well as at the last meeting, I think you mentioned you were, would like to be able to approach the, the pad of the old barn and use it as a parking area or at least a laydown area, or not, not remove it?
Yeah, so the plan is to still keep the, the pad. As far as the use, it's still just going to be a recreational use. If Chris wants to expand on that at a, at a later time, he can, but it's my understanding that it's just a recreational use.
Okay, great. I'm going to start with Wes, if there's any comments, I know La Bella has had a chance to look at this.
Yeah, thank you, Joe. We did issue our comments today. I know the applicant has been submitting updated plans here and there as we've gone through the, the course of this review. Number one, it looks to be an unlisted action under Seeker, so a short form is, only a short form is required. We're asking that they apply a use, a note on the plans indicating that a use variance was granted on whatever date that was. With regard to the Orona Quay Creek watershed.
I just want to make sure you're talking into the microphone. I'm asking Keith if you.
With regard to the Orona Quay Creek watershed requirements, we, we're asking the, the applicant to just revisit those, take a look at the, just because it appears to us that they may exceed the threshold for the design in accordance with the Orona Quay Creek watershed packet for developers, so we just want them to review that and, and modify the design if necessary. With the open cut of the town road, generally the design and construction standards require boring underneath the road unless approval is granted by the town highway superintendent for the open cut. Just a minor detail, the lateral connection, and we'd like to see a grading plan just to finalize our, close our, our review. That's, that's the, that's the substance of our, of our comments.
Okay, open it up to the Board. Joe, questions?
A couple things. I, I like the idea conceptually. I'm curious if we've got any elevations to look at.
He did hand these to me just before the meeting, so I'm going to pass them, there's one set there, if you want to.
Thank you.
Peruse those and pass them along.
And then I do have two questions. You show a wood pallet bridge and a metal bridge, and I'm not quite sure what they are.
Those are just existing, they're just existing bridges that are out there. I'm not sure to what degree if they're even used at all.
Because it doesn't seem to be an elevation change that I can see. It, it shows 702 feet on both sides of the bridge.
Are those still out there? They're, they're still out there and, and they're at that 700 elevation, it hasn't changed.
Okay. I'm, I'm good, I'm going to look at these.
Okay.
And no questions, the only comment is, you know, appreciate the change in the site plan, and I think it's going to not only accommodate, you know, the bigger buffer, but I think functionally it's probably more efficient to have the two structures, you know, co-located, so, thank you.
I have the same comment.
Okay, Ernie?
As do I, appreciate the changes, I think it's much better than it was.
We do have some elevations that Joe is passing along. I, I think this is an excellent application to our comments and, you know, I think you'll be much more, I like the idea of being able to walk within all the buildings without having to go outside and walk across a courtyard, and it's not across traffic or, you know, trucks or vehicles moving in and out, so I think this will be a much more efficient functional structure that, that you've developed. So, I don't have any other questions or comments. I think the architecture looks good in the images that you've shown, and I don't know if Bruce Zaretsky looked at the.
He, he's looked at it a couple times now, yeah.
Did Bruce look at those new images? Wes, do you know? Okay.
Did Bruce?
Zaretsky?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, he's seen those.
Oh, he hasn't seen.
Oh, no, he hasn't seen those, he's.
Is this the front elevation?
Uh, yes.
Oh, Mark, sorry. Yeah. All right. Okay, Wes, is there any, other than what you talked about earlier, outstanding issues? Is there a reason, or any reason that we shouldn't be able to advance this through with some conditions? Is there any outstanding information they still need to have?
Yes, that, so there's, I think maybe there is the possibility of, of moving forward on this tonight, but I do want to call your attention to the code enforcement officer's comments from December 6th and the applicant, I see their response here as well. So, one of the things that the applicant ran into when, when they obtained a use variance for, or use variance modification that was, looks like it was granted on September 18, 2023, it was granted based on the construction of a 3,840 square foot detached building with limitations on what the space could be used for, is what the code enforcement officer is saying. So if they wish to proceed with the current revision as with what you see in front of you, it includes the 3,840 square foot building and then also 1,000, I can't remember, 1,000 and change.
1,140.
140 square, square feet of, of a building connection. So, it was the code enforcement officer's determination that the use variance.
Needs to be revised.
Modification was very specific to the 3,840 square foot.
Okay.
Detached building only. So it's their feeling that they should return to the ZBA just to get clarification, or get a modification of, of what was modified already.
Yeah.
To allow for, it's, it's almost a clerical, it, to me, I'm, I'm looking at that, it is, it is the, it seems like the correct process, correct thing to do is to have, is to have them go back to the ZBA just to get that clerical and administrative sort of thing complete, completed. So, that being said, as the applicant has expressed in their letter back to the code enforcement officer, they understand the approved use variance modification would require updating, right, as a result of their comments, and they're requesting that the final approval of the site plan be conditioned upon returning to the ZBA, not for a whole new use variance, but just for the administrative clarification component.
Oh, in other words, prior to Chairman's signature, all of these things kind of basically have to line up?
Yeah, yeah, so.
Including your other comments.
Yeah, so La Bella, La Bella's comments, while they may result in some small design modifications, the, the, in large part, I feel that the layout and what they've provided to you today is, is likely not going to change, but there might just be some tweaks here and there to the site plan. But it's up to you as a Board whether or not you want to move forward and condition an approval on, on those items tonight, or if you want to wait.
So the, I guess part of this would be, when does the ZBA, or would they be able to address that? What's their next meeting that this could be fit in with them?
January.
Oh, mid-January? So nothing could move forward without that, at least in terms of signing drawings and things like that, correct?
Yeah, it sounds like we wouldn't be able to sign drawings until after they attend the, the ZBA again.
So I guess my perspective is, I don't think we, we don't have a prepared resolution this evening for this. Yeah.
So it looks like the next meeting, the next Planning Board meeting is January 9th, which would be prior to the next ZBA meeting, is what I understand.
I guess my thought is, unless that has language that is well spelled out, you know, the, the draft, it wouldn't matter whether we do this now or on the 9th.
Yeah.
I guess what, I know what you'd like to hear is, we're good with this or not good with this. I have a feeling that everyone here on the Board is quite satisfied with what you've presented, the changes you've made. I think the town engineers are, other than some minor, you know, edits or tweaks, are good with it. Architecture seems like it'll fit, and I think overall, you've got a good positive response from the Board tonight, and we could just make it formal on the 9th. And I think you can rest your holidays knowing that it's going to just continue to move forward, and then the only administrative element is the ZBA on the 16th, and then, you know, if we do conditional on the 9th with the right language, and that gives La Bella a chance to address her, you would, to address any of La Bella's comments between now and then as well, it's a very straightforward meeting.
Yeah, agreed.
You're okay with that, I would think that would be a good.
So, just to, just to clarify, would we get conditional approval tonight, go to the ZBA? Granted, we get approval from them, I would just have to come in for the plan signatures?
I'm suggesting we would just do that on the 9th. It doesn't matter timing-wise when you come in for signatures.
Gotcha.
That way, the language could be, not have to be doctored this evening, I guess, or added to, and you still have direction to go see the ZBA anyway to do this.
Correct.
No matter if it's, it's not going to change a thing.
Right.
From either the client, your client's perspective or, you know, the engineering part of it, to address some questions and go to the ZBA, because we can deal with that on the 9th before the ZBA meeting. We don't have to wait till they act.
Right.
If they have a meeting next week, I'd say, well, maybe we can push through on this, but they're not, so.
Okay.
If you're okay with that, I, I think I would prefer to hold off and do that on the 9th. You guys are okay with that? So, I'm not, I'm not trying to delay anything, I don't think that's going to happen. I think we're just i's and t's dotted and crossed.
It'll be, it'll be cleaner if we hold off on the conditional approval until January 9th. That way, we can clean up the La Bella comments, we'll have a resolution prepared, and we're ready to go.
Yeah.
Are you looking for architectural comments?
We have an ARC group here, it's myself and Al, and.
It's very consistent with the existing structure, so, and matches, so I have no issues.
Yeah, I mean, we can voice our opinions here, the Board, if you had, you're certainly free to make any comments on what you've seen, and they've passed out. Ernie, you all set with it?
I am.
Okay. So, no, I think you guys are all set with that as well.
Okay.
So. Great.
Awesome.
Enjoy your holiday.
Thank you.
Be back on the 9th.
Yeah, we'll see you then, appreciate it.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Second item on the agenda.
I'll, I'll adjourn for this one and I'll be back.
Okay, this should be pretty quick, I think. This is the Elias Soil Stabilization Project, and applicant is requesting site plan approval for soil restoration and stabilization of the parcel from the work performed during recent pool installation. That was last, past summer, I believe, so, good evening.
Hi, hi. Brett Elias, resident, 6949 Valentine Road. Yeah, the, the plan was actually to come in here and request a, a get-together with the town and La Bella to go over some iterations that we've came up with to address the problems. There's a lot, I just saw Lisa's email and I have them in my back pocket on a thumb drive, but I don't know if we have time to present them here tonight, but, and my engineers really haven't agreed on one yet, so I think I was just going to request an extension to come up with a plan, I guess.
Well, Keith, I think if you want to address that quickly, or if you have any comments from that, because I know you guys have been back and forth with it.
Yeah, what I talked with Wes and Lisa about is, I think, to his point, if he gets the extension, then between now and the next Planning Board meeting, we'll get together and have a meeting to discuss some of the options with his engineer and the town engineer.
Okay, so it's your plan to work through this, come back to the next Planning Board meeting, and you'd like an extension to, to that meeting date in order to, you know, take care of outstanding questions, it sounds like?
That's the town's perspective, yeah.
Yeah, okay. Does anyone have any questions for the applicant, as long as he's up there? Wes, did you have any comments? Okay. So, with that, and I, in, in anticipation of that request, because I think you've expressed that to the town, I have a short resolution here for that extension request. So, I'll read that. Whereas in a letter dated December 8, 2023, Brett Elias of 6949 Valentine Road requested a 42-day extension of time for application titled "On Elias Soil Stabilization." Therefore, be it resolved at the Town of Victor Planning Board grants a 42-day extension of time for the Elias Soil Stabilization. So what that does, that 42 days gets you to the second board meeting in January, but I think the expectation is resolving this stuff before the first board meeting, as I understand it, so there is some sense of urgency there, and, and I know it's the holidays, but we want to make sure that this keeps moving along, so.
Oh, it is, definitely, yeah. Plus, we want to realize too, we, none of the plans that are, were talked about can even be completed until the spring.
Understood.
There is time, but I'm not taking advantage of it, we're, we're working on it.
I just want to make sure we have agreement from the town's perspective, and both the, you know, department and the engineer, that, that what you're proposing and is agreed upon is actually going to satisfy or solve the, the problems, or at least.
That's the goal, yep, yep.
Okay, with that resolution, does I hear a motion?
So moved.
No moves?
Seconds.
Ernie, seconds, on favor?
Hi.
Have an extension for 42 days.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
I think Scott was just out.
Oh, Scott, you can come back. Okay, so we do have one last item on the agenda. It is a public hearing, it's open. Glazer In Ground Pool, 204 Miles Cutting Lane, owner Brett Glazer, and the applicant's requesting approval to install a gunite pool and spa patio area, dining area, and fencing on a 1.7 acre parcel. That's making his way back. Good evening.
Good evening. Clerk Claire on the, it's Steve Glazer, I think most of the paperwork has it correct, except that, that one sheet says Brett for the agenda. Probably a copy and paste. Nope, it's all right. Anyway, Steve Glazer, here tonight with my wife Kaylee, the homeowners, are the owner of Precision Pool, Dave, and my licensed landscape architect, Dan Hackett. And as seen in the notes, went to the zoning board last week and got approval for some of the concerns there, and I'll let, I'll let Dan kind of speak to the rest of the plans and, and progress.
Good evening.
Hi, good evening, Dan Hackett, landscape architect. I don't know, did you get the color plan? Oh, yeah, yeah, you have it up, super.
And there's a pointer there if you need to use one, so.
I'll try. It's been a long day.
I'll look in it.
Been up since 10:30, no, my daughter, I'm a grandparent now.
She just hired her first.
It's been a long day, so anyway. The, the residents, behind the residents, they're proposing to put in a, a pool, the existing structure shown in yellow. The pool location, as discussed, we did meet with the zoning board and got a variance for our setbacks. The topography on the site plan was just, it's done as spot elevations right now, everything is superimposed in the bottom for spot elevations. Coming out the back, there's an existing patio, that patio and retaining wall we've taken out, the pa, the pool would be brought up to that grade where you come down the stairs to the house and out with their outdoor area. In the back of the house, there will be two trees removed, they're black locust trees, they're actually in pretty bad shape. We're going to be putting in dogwoods, red buds, and they want to do mostly a native planting, they're also going to have berry bushes. As far as coming down through the house, now the yard has a gentle swell, it goes down into this drain achievement. On the gentle swell, we're actually going to have a 12-inch perforated corrugated pipe. We will set a catch basin on the far side of the swell, we'll pick up the water, that will go into the entire patio system when we come into infiltration. Because the patio is getting raised, it'll be raised up about 32 inches to almost four feet down at the end. So where this happens, that's, that'll all be done with number two clean angular stone. The pipe will be set at, it will actually, it doesn't have to be set level, it can have a pitch, as long as at the upper end, in the far end, we're level at the grade, we'll bring that up with 10 inches of clean angular stone. The 10 inches will then give us enough capacity to hold a four-inch vent, so what we want to do is put all of the water and the drains back into, hold that storm capacity, allow that to infiltrate over a 24-hour period, and in the event there's a six-inch storm, which we had a few of those this year, actually, the water would come above that 10-inch layer of stone, it'll go into the pipe, it will weep out into a daylight area, which we pitted with riprap, and then go into the drain achievement that exists to the, to the side of the property, the south side. The existing fence, right now, the back of the fence is off the property. The proposal, after talking with zoning, and the zoning officer would be, there's actually going to be a two, a two-gate system, so there'll be gates where there'll be access for the children to get out into the playground, that'll be closed off, it comes up around the pool, it'll be off the property line, back up the property line, down the drive-in and closing, and that'll meet New York State Code, all the new fencing, obviously. Other than that, it's a pretty, pretty straightforward project. All the earth that's excavated for the pool will be taken off-site, and that'll be part of the contract with the, with the pool installer, so there'll be no stockpiling, and the idea is to just have the least amount of disturbance and move as surgically as, as we can, so it's, it's actually a buildup job, not a, not a big fill job. I guess other than that, that's kind of just the overview of everything, and I would just throw it to the Board to answer any questions they may have.
Can you elaborate a little on the, the map I see has, and you mentioned this, the actual property line is inside the fence line right now, were you talking about moving the fence?
The, the fence, the fence.
What's on the line, I guess.
When, when we spoke with zoning, the. When we spoke with zoning, the rear property line fence will ha, will have to be moved to be approved, because it is off the property. The owner has an agreement with the, when they bought the property, there is a deed agreement that the next-door parcel knows the fences on their property. They're allowed to keep that fence there and maintain it, and that was part of their purchase agreement. The fencing coming down alongside the drive right now is a split rail. That split rail has a wire mesh. The wire mesh that's on there is a two-inch by four-inch, which is not code compliant. To be code compliant would have to be 1.75, or have to be 1.9. Typically, it's 1.75 by four. And if that was placed on the outside of the split rail, that could be used. The client has said that they are willing to put an entire new fence in, like a jarath ovation fence, in that area. They'd like to leave the other fence that is off the property. They have permission in their deed, and what it does is it sort of contains the children to the yard, not going back in the woods. It keeps wildlife out. They, again, the final with the fence, we were, the zoning officer was at the zoning meeting, and we may discuss because the fence down the one side, the split rail, to keep that consistent look with the neighborhood, it would be nice to do that and be able to upgrade that to a compliant fence, but it was a little in the air because they had this, the rear property line that's off the property. So what's been agreed to is we will get code-compliant fence on the property, and we will contain the pool with that code-compliant fence. Does that...
Completely on the property.
Completely on their property, not off their property.
I just wanted, it sounded a little unusual.
Yeah, there's a chicken and egg thing, and I see your perspective of it. You know, again, we were with zoning, very forthright, that the rest of the fencing, they really would like to keep up to keep the children in the yard. And although that's off the property, that's a deed restriction that, that's really something that would be, the jurisdiction is with the attorneys and everybody who writes that language. So they felt comfortable with that, as long as we had a compliant fence on the property. That's what zoning said last week when we were here.
Okay. Open up to the floor, I guess. Ernie, do you have any questions?
I know. I think it's well-stated. I think you're doing everything you can and do it right.
Okay. Scott?
Was there some property acquisition or anything like that, or is the properties, the property line stays the same?
The property line stays the same, Scott. It's, it's one of these things, and Steve could answer better, but I guess there's been two owners, Steve, since you've purchased the property? And this has been written in this agreement every time this property gets sold, that that fence doesn't need to be moved, which, you know, I guess, nice neighbors, that's great, and it's great that they do that. And I think that the parcel is so large next to them that they're not worried about it, and I think they wrote it in the agreement so that someone can't come back seven years later and say, hey, I wrote you a letter every year, and I'm taking your, you know, property on adverse possession and that kind of thing. So it protects that homeowner who has it, and they're very comfortable with it being there, because it's not disruptive to their parcel or their lifestyles at all.
And codes is okay with it?
Code is not okay with it. It has to be on the property. So that rear fence has to be moved up to one inch inside the property line, which it will be. I think what was up in the air on the fencing was, would we be able to leave it by the drive down along where the, where the drain achievement is, and then bring that fence up to compliance? Because that fence is all on their property. So the point was just what is off the property, as I understood it. Yes.
Maybe your question is codes is okay, leaving the fencing that's there as long as you build something on the property between that fence and the pool?
I believe that was what we had discussed, yes. The fence that's there, though, just so you know, is not code compliant. So that would need to be, it would need to have a new mesh put up that is code compliant. And we were going to, when the zoning officer was there, I think that after we got through this process, we were going to have a talk, look at that fence again, but it was that we can't have fencing off the property, was the real point of discussion.
Okay. Anything else, Scott? Al?
I think it's a well-thought-out project.
Hey, Joe?
I think it's very attractive, well-thought-out. I'm supportive as well.
Wes, any concerns from Labella, or that you've talked to codes about?
I think you've answered some of the questions that we had, or some of the comments that we made in a letter from November 14th. Yard drainage, I think I understand a little bit better now what's going on with, with yard drainage with your description tonight. Vegetation, you mentioned that you'll be removing the two black locust trees that are in maybe not, not, not good health, I guess. And then the, the pool discharge, would you be able to provide some information regarding the anticipated discharge location for the pool?
So, the equipment will be located in the garage. The filter system is going to be a cartridge system, so there's not a backwashing process. It's taking the cartridges out and actually cleansing those. As far as if the pool ever had to be drained, in an ideal world, a gunite pool would never be drained, because gunite is a huge barge being installed in the ground, and if you have any hydrostatic pressure at all, they pop. They do have automatic pops. In the event that it had to be drained, I think there's a couple of strategies. One would be actually they neutralize the water, and the water's going to have to be put into this infiltration system and allowed to actually infiltrate back into the ground. They also do, I haven't seen one, I've only read about them, and I'm not sure who has them. I think somebody at Naples has one, but they have a machine that comes in, and it's a reverse osmosis, and it actually takes the water out and purifies the water, to where it's total drinking water. It de-chlorinates and takes everything out. And again, I think going into the infiltration system and allowing that, but it would not be intensely chlorinated water. That would be getting discharged into the, into the swell, which then would go into the drain achievement and tie into the watershed.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else, Wes?
That's it.
Okay. This is a public hearing. If there's anyone here from the public that has any questions, we have a public here. So, with that, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Move.
Ernie moves.
Second.
Al, seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Carry five zero. Public hearing is closed.
Thank you.
And unless there's any other discussion, questions, or anything that the applicant wishes to bring to our attention, now is the time, but otherwise, I have a resolution to read regarding this application. You guys are all set with that? There we go. So, for the Glazer In Ground Pool, 204 Miles Cutting Lane, Application 38 SB 2023, whereas the planning board made the following findings a fact, there are nine of them. Now therefore be it resolved that the application of Steve Glazer, that's right in the application, the resolution. Site plan entitled Glazer In Ground Pool, located in the limited development district received by Planning Board October 10th, 2023, last revised December 7th, 2023, Planning Board Application 38 SB 2023, be approved with the following conditions. Conditions to be addressed prior to the chairman's signature on the site plan. Number one is standard. Number two, that the comments from Labella Associates dated November 14th, 2023 be addressed. Ongoing conditions. Number one, site plan comply with town and Victor design and construction standards. Number two, that a building permit be obtained for the pool prior to installation, and be it further resolved that the planning board secretary distribute the planning board's approval letter. Do I hear a motion to approve this resolution?
I'll move.
Ernie moves.
I'll second.
Scott seconds. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Carry five zero. So, I think you guys are all set.
Have a great holiday.
You too. Thank you. I think that's it. So that's the agenda this evening. I hope everyone has a wonderful holiday, and I'll entertain a motion for adjournment. Al moves, and Scott seconds, and there's no discussion. So Merry Christmas, everyone, and Happy Hanukkah, and Happy New Year.
Thank you.
That went kind of fast.
It did. Am I a little faster than I thought?